330 Fisher, request from the Assistant Chief Administrative Officer.
Sorry.
I know.
So on June 27th, council had a complaint with regards to the variation application to vary the required parking spaces at 330 Fisher Avenue from eight to five. Three citizens appeared before council with concerns mainly because there was already a parking issue downtown. One of the citizens pointed out there doesn't, if there didn't appear to be enough room for turnaround radius with the five parking spaces. I've spoken with the municipal superintendent and the drafting department and they are in agreement with the statement that with five parking spaces, there is only 13 feet width, which is not enough room. Manitoba infrastructure and transportation specs are 7.2 meters for a turning radius. The turning radius is not a requirement within our zoning bylaw. The engineering and drafting department have suggested three angled parking spots which will accommodate the turning radius and the 10 by 20 zoning bylaw requirement for this size. And it's in your field.
Okay, so what does all this mean? What does all of this mean?
All of this means that essentially that there's no, there's not room there for five parking spots, there's only room there for three parking spots. And the variation calls to go from eight parking spots to five. And what they actually need to apply for is to go from eight to three because that's the only room for parking spots that there is. So we can't approve a variation that isn't true. And essentially is what the problem is, is that the drawing that we have isn't a true drawing of the amount of parking spaces that can be there.
Well, so we can't fit, there isn't a way to fit-
According to the engineering department, we can't fit, it won't fit five.
With the turning radius?
Yep.
But we don't require turning radius?
That's correct.
So we can fit five parking spaces in that space?
They just can't turn around.
But they just can't get it.
You gotta go in one way and come out the same way you went in.
Yep.
I went down there with a tape measure and the distance from the edge of the curb to that fence where the drawings show five is actually 30 feet.
Not 50, right? It's not 50, right?
No, 30 feet is not going to get five, let alone have turning radius and whatnot around there. The drawings, because they only showed the number one parking spot as being eight feet wide, one would assume that the other four would also be eight feet, but that's impossible in the space available. So there's a real problem there. And the reason we're looking at parking is because we know uptown, if you can't park behind the buildings, you will park on the street. And as soon as you get a facility with some sort of office building, space, plus five apartments, now, five apartments, a family of four, there's 20 people, there's five cars, there's a whole lot of other things that, to me, the suitability of the whole thing and the availability of the space to do this isn't sufficient. So I would be speaking against it.
Are we, I wonder if we're suggesting though that, let's say we've got five apartments and 20 people in an office, are we suggesting that these people are all up and busy in their office at 3:30, 4 o'clock in the morning when no one's on the street? Where everybody does park who lives downtown and there are many, 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 many people that live downtown. I can see one, I can see two, I can see people who operate businesses, lots, who do keep their vehicles on the street. Not just some of the hours, but all of the hours. So I'm wondering, you know, if we're thinking that this is a, some sort of an all-night situation line where people just never sleep, they just live in an apartment and therefore they're entitled to.
Well, no, but I mean, the fact of the matter is, is that you're already one parking spot short for what wants to go in the building. You want five apartment buildings and one office space. So really, you should already have six parking spots because you have six units. But you would already be reducing that to five. And so now, we know that there isn't going to be five people that are going to be able to park behind there, there's going to be able to be three. So now you have three people still, two people who live there, let's say, and the one person who runs an office space, who have nowhere to park during the day when the two-hour parking is in effect. What are you gonna do?
I just want to make a comment that I had, I will say I was the one, Randy Mann, pardon me, Billy Inspector and I went over the survey and the plans and we were the one that figured that five would fit. We did not take into consideration a turning radius because it's not within our zoning bylaw.
Right.
It was just an issue that was brought up at the public hearing, so it had to be addressed.
Okay. So, here the property owner, Michael, are you looking to change the conditions of variation? Like down to three or, you know, like-
Excuse me?
What?
We had a hearing two weeks ago-
Yeah.
-at which time these questions could have been answered. Why are we now into-
This information wasn't brought up two weeks ago at the hearing?
I know.
Because we didn't know about it. We only found out about it since the hearing. And we haven't even, we haven't even made a decision on the hearing.
We had this documentation, what we lacked at the hearing was anyone representing the company requesting. So there was no one to ask these questions to. And we just had a discussion about, well, did we get into, discussion with people in the audience when we're in the midst of a council meeting? And I think we have-
Not in the midst of a council meeting, we're having a committee, the whole meeting, where nobody can vote.
And the public can't speak during committee of the whole meeting.
This is all just craziness. Sorry, people, you're not allowed to communicate with us and we sure can't communicate with you.
There is a process, that's why it's called a hearing, Mr. Mayor.
We did not have this information. We're discussing information that was not brought forward at the hearing, that all of a sudden you got out there with the court and measured everything. So this is different information you're bringing forward that wasn't brought forward at the hearing. You're bringing in information that you brought about after the hearing was held. That's what's happening here. That's what's happening here.
So Jim, on 4.6, I'm gonna bring up the issue I have with the variation process in general, right? So your whole point is that information's not provided well, that's the issue. We're not operating very well. We're creating this.
Right.
We're creating this melee ourselves, right? Because we're not, in my opinion, we're not doing it right. This information should have been vetted through engineering, drafting, the CEO to check for bylaws, the fire commission slash building inspector, whoever that, like, if you're doing a project, that's what you go through. We didn't do that and we're saying, well, we can't, we've created this problem ourselves, right? That's gotta change.
You're right. I shouldn't be asking for, you're right, I shouldn't be asking for thoughts on, I'm sorry. You're right, you're right, you're right. Yes.
And once, when council makes a decision on a variation, the board or council may impose conditions or require the property owner to enter into an agreement. So you can put conditions, you can say, you'll pass it and it'll only be three, you can pass it, it's only four.
Okay, so I'm curious, when do we have that, when do we have that discussion before? Because this is gonna have to come to council, well, I have to vote on this hearing at some point. Sounds like the 25th is the earliest.
You can make your recommendation right now, your discussion can be right now.
I can't make a recommendation without talking to the property owner, I can't do that, so.
So then that's the direction you provide me, what you want me to ask the property owner?
Okay, I'd like to find out if he would settle on three, on three parking spots and then we can decide if that's where we wanna go.
Can I speak?
Yes, of course.
How many apartment blocks, how many apartments are on here? Five? Five?
Five in one office.
Okay, in one office. So you've got five apartments, right? And three parking spots. And then you're gonna put a business in there with no parking. Just bringing up the points, it doesn't make any sense to me.
The variation was brought to us, how the variation was brought?
No, I know, I know, but-
We don't control how, what comes, we'll-
Yeah, no, I know, I'm just stating a fact-
Yeah.
...that you should have parking for your tenants. And if you don't, you're going to put them on the main street. And I think we had a council meeting a few weeks ago that we decided we were going to look at our downtown and keep it at our downtown for businesses. And now here, you're talking about letting somebody put five, a building with five apartments and maybe a business there where, oh, you only have to have three parking spots. And we know darn well that the parking's gonna wind up in the street. And this is what we've been fighting with, we've got the two-hour parking, we're doing a trial there, and now we're just adding some more fuel to the fire. My opinion.
Okay, I, all right, move on.
I just wanna say, I mean, I have to echo what Margaret is saying. I mean, we had a variation for a youth center that we turned down because we said that the downtown area wasn't the appropriate place for a youth center, but we zoned it as something that was commercial and it should be businesses that are going in there. And while I understand that there are a lot of businesses that have apartments above them, I believe most of those businesses are predominantly used as businesses and the residents are the secondary, I don't know, revenue stream, I guess, if you will. I would like to see something that had more business and a little less residential in it and something that maybe if it was changed a little bit and there was more room for parking so that we have adequate parking behind the building because we did just pass a bylaw for two-hour parking and it would, is there, I mean, another variation that we had, the people brought forward, that they had rented parking spots at another, at another place so that, you know, they only had the two or whatever, but then they had the three extra ones that they needed at another place. I don't know if there's parking rentals available around this building that maybe that's something that you could look at is having parking at a secondary location so that you do still have off-street parking to support the building, but that's my two cents.
Since we're on the parking issue again, even with two-hour parking, we're still gonna have some issues. And the three, four people that were here last week sort of had some ideas around that. It'd be good if we get the downtown business community to come up with some ideas because I think two-hour parking's gonna help, but it's not gonna solve the problem, right? You wanna make it work for everyone, but the way it sits right now, it doesn't. So I don't know. I mean, we have a park at Second and Edwards, maybe that's three or four spots that you can pick up, makes a difference. There's an empty piece of land by the post office, why aren't we talking to OCN and say, hey, can we get a row of parking there and start alleviating some of these issues? Because it'd be great if there's lots of people living downtown, shopping downtown and there's more shops and everyone was happy, right? But we seem to be hung up around this parking thing. We don't always, we need to find a way to address the issue and the people that's getting in the game are the ones that are gonna have the answers, right? So, and not necessarily us.
Tony, I totally agree with Alan. I don't think as business people, everybody should sit together and work together. But there are businesses downtown and services that are not working together and that's why we get to this point.
Is the two-hour parking, pardon my ignorance, I thought I knew the assets, but now I'm not 100% sure. Is there two-hour parking like an 8:00 AM till 6:00 PM thing, Monday to Friday?
It's just during the daytime, yes.
All right, good.
So, but then if you have somebody, I'm gonna continue, if you have somebody having five apartment blocks and they're gonna park there all night, let's talk about snow clearing. Or, because where are they gonna park at night when the, when the graders come and push the snow? They're gonna be parked on the street and that's where the snow's gonna stay.
In any urban area, they show up with a tow truck right in front, they take it and-
No kidding?
That happens once and that doesn't keep happening.
Yep, and that should be done.
It is, a tow truck.
I don't know.
Well, it's kinda like you have a rule, but you know, not great. Again, rules are rules, rules are rules. Okay, so you'll get that information for us then?
Okay, so what would the property owner like to do?
Pardon me?
What property owner would like to do?
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Is there anything else you wanna bring up about that? Okay, Sammaler Museum, display of a diesel generator.
3.2.
3.2?
Sorry.
No, that's okay.
The Sammaler Museum has been approached with the donation of a large old Manitoba hydro 16-cylinder diesel generator. They would like to, the museum would like to display this item by the skipper in Devon Park. They will, the museum is prepared to arrange engineering drawings for the cement pad and approach local service groups to fund the cost of the cement pad and fence around the generator. She, Shereen is still looking to get a picture so we can have an idea of what this looks like because I have no clue.
Well, let's wait till we have some more information. Was that fair enough to request?
Yeah, let's wait till we have the information.
She was hoping to have it by today and just didn't.
I would be worried, you know, with other things, vandalism and all that kind of stuff.
Or, you know, someone might think a nuckshook is a cool thing to have a fence around, I don't know, it could happen. All right, 4.1, KRC fee increase.
This was brought forward at the last committee of the whole meeting and council requested-
Yes.
...the recreation director to speak on this.
Are you allowed to come and speak to us about that?
Yes. I'm gonna start having Snickers to give to you during meetings. I guess I submitted that request, I guess it was two weeks ago, so apparently you guys have questions or would you like to know? Or you just want me to read out what I sent you?
Well, you know what, for me, it was the opportunity, I think, to have another look at it in black and white.
Okay.
So I honestly, I don't have a single question about it now, but I'm sure others do, so.
I honestly was really, I'm like, I can't remember asking for more information.
I wasn't, I wasn't talking about-
I know, I know.
We did.
I can't, I can't, I don't remember.
I think we just want the bottom line of you're keeping track of everything and you're slowly putting it up where people are not gonna say, "Oh, the fee's gone up."
Yeah. Basically, because we've always kinda done a 3% and what I'm finding is a 3% is not enough. So what we did is I looked at kind of what areas needed, we needed to take a little bit more from compared to some that 3% is sufficient. For example, like the arena, a 3% increase for youth and adult rates is probably sufficient right now. As the pool, I think we need to take a little bit more, right? Non-prime time ice, so not for our local user groups, so maybe more outside user groups, we're gonna take more money from them. Our regular users will take kind of a regular, but we have to increase them because you have to increase the fees. If we don't increase the fees, it's going back on the taxpayers and I think the user has to pay more. So basically, what I've done is I had put together kind of what we should do for this year, which, like I said, it's between the 3 and 5%, or 3 and 6%, and then starting next year, it's 4% each year. It slowly gets us a little bit more revenue compared to what we have done in the past. Public recreation should be subsidized 60% and revenue should be at 40. We wanna get closer to there because we're at 30/70. And when you look at general public rec, that's where we should be at as a municipality. When you look at comparisons for the communities, we are the lowest. I know you guys don't like to look at other communities, but we have the lowest rates. I talked to a guy in Flimflon and he said, "Yeah, well, it's because your taxes are so high and your recreation is cheap." So we need our users to pay a little bit more and I think they can. I think when they're, when you know there's groups that are renting ice, pool and everything in Thompson and Flimflon every second weekend, I think they can pay that for us. Or even when they're going to OCN and paying 80 bucks an hour, why can't they give 80 bucks an hour to us, right? So our groups are doing this, so I think increasing them a little bit more is not, it's not a lunch. And then we're not always going back to the taxpayer base to get it, the users are paying more. So that's kind of what we had looked at trying to do this year.
Now is that a result of we have a large portion of our population that resides outside of town limits, right? So they're not taxpayers?
Um, I don't know, I guess. The RM does contribute, I have the amount, to recreation. Um, because, yeah, I don't know that one, I don't have that off, I'd have to look into-
Is that not another, whole other thing to, for us to look at though, are-
Yeah.
-those fees that are, that we charge outside of the municipality?
Yeah. And if you look, I don't know if you guys had a chance, but looking in the other communities and comparing non-resident rates, if you're a non-resident, you're paying like double. If you're a swimmer, you're paying double.
Yeah.
Um, Flimflon, you're paying double. If you don't live in Flimflon and you live in Creighton and you wanna swim at their pool-
Yeah.
-it's not six bucks, it's 12. So those rates are really, really high, actually, for non-residents when you're looking at the overall picture of it.
But we're not doing that anymore, right?
No, no, we still charge a non-resident recreation fee for registration for programs, but for drop-ins, we don't. OCN, for example, pays 160 an hour for the pool compared to school division or our groups that aren't even at 100.
Yeah.
So we have implemented it in some areas. It's mostly programs compared to drop-in fees, but most communities do it on drop-in fees too, so that is something if we wanna implement, you can.
Okay. Anybody else? Thank you, Amber.
So we're with the reservation?
We are.
Okay.
4.2, Christchurch.
So we received a letter from Christchurch, the fence that surrounds the Christchurch, I don't know how to say that next word, the signage?
signage.
Thank you. And the cemetery is needed, is in need of replacement. Christchurch would like to create a stone wall fence, two and a half by three feet high, inches high, I'm sorry.
Two and a half.
Okay, cross the date. They're requesting the following donations from the town and the surrounding community. So when they save the town, they're not just being, "You guys," it's the town in general. They're looking for stones, eight to 10 inches in diameter, clay soil, crushed limestone and volunteers. My recommendation is to send them a letter saying that the town would be willing to participate in this project, but only in once they find out who else is involved, what everyone wants to do. And I had suggested the community enhance fund would be an appropriate fund if council was interested in funding this. They feel that this is a major commitment by individuals of the town, the PA, OCN and people of Christchurch to make this event a success and that it would be working together.
Yeah. Thoughts?
I think we need some more information. No, I just don't know what, I need to think for a second.
Yeah, I guess, the first thing that came to my mind is, does this become the first of many? A stone fence is not a picket fence by any stretch of the imagination. It's replacing with something quite different that already exists on that. And other than our goodwill, what would we actually provide? I don't know. Yeah, so if it's money, then that requires, as was pointed out, like, let's have a plan and a process. But I still would question, once we start supporting individual groups in this way with regard to theirs, facilities and whatnot, that's a different thing. Now, if it was a parity issue or something, I guess it's different until we know more.
Counselor Zlinski.
I would say, you know, that I'm not in favor of supporting this in any monetary way or in-kind contribution or anything like that. I would suggest that we could send them a letter and wish them luck, but that would probably be all that I would be willing to offer for something like this.
Counselor Giff, any comments? No? Counselor Carter?
I'm gonna have to agree with Chad, like, we could say no, that's just not bylaw. It's a great idea-
Yes.
...but the monetary is just not doable this time.
Yeah, I don't wanna start a precedent of, you know, if we say yes, then how do we say no to anybody else? And it's no, you know, secret that we don't have a lot of extra money to just be giving out and like I said, I mean, where do we, who do we decide who we say yes to and who we say no to then? Hearing no sucks, but unfortunately, if we're consistent, then at least, you know, everybody hears it.
I'm, myself, I'm all, I'm all in favor of assisting it and I'll do so as Jim Scott and I would encourage you all to do the same thing, but that is a slippery slope that I'm not prepared to slide down. All right, we will move along, payroll and accounts.
Check register was submitted for Town of the Paw. Checks are in the amount of $2,000, $272,457.67. Just note that there was a check for Northern Gateway Community Chaplaincy for $20,000, that was their 2016 grant. There was a check issued to Wosley for $53,000 and that was for water meters and supplies.
Okay.
And then there was checks for Calci Recreation, $90,657.91.
What?
We, it's a, we, it's a couple pay runs there. And I forgot payroll period 13 in the amount of $117,953. Go ahead and let us know.
Okay, resolution for council meeting? 4.4, traffic count. Counselor Giff.
I'll speak on this, please.
Please.
Please, thanks.
So in speaking with engineering department, they approached someone about doing studies, railway crossings-
Right.
-as part of the new transport requirement requirements. And I think there's some other work that needs to be done in town that they're partnering with. And along the same lines, back in 2005, there was a Paw downtown revitalization plan put forward, which had some really good information, had traffic counts on every major intersection along Fisher, I think, starting probably down by Gordon or down by Michaels and then right to the bridge. And some companies coming in to do that kind of work, this would be a great opportunity to leverage that or at least explore what it would cost to have that sort of information flushed out.
And perhaps partner up with those who have to have traffic counts down or something or talk to them.
Yeah.
I believe the municipal superintendent is already looking into this.
Because when you look at our REAP analysis that MAFRE or MAFRID or whatever they're called now put forward to us-
Yeah.
-that came out of the CDC, we're a service center, right? That's one of our strong points and sometimes I think we have difficulty proving that outside people or people who aren't coming to the community, but traffic counts is something that's, we know we have really high traffic counts, we have traffic counts on par with a much larger urban area than we are, but we need to prove that. So if there's an opportunity, I mean, if this was a one-off, I don't know if I'd be bringing this forward, but since someone's coming to do work anyways, it's certainly something worth exploring.
Believe it or not, like major corporations and that, when they determine anything, that's the first thing they look at.
That's the first thing they, there you go.
They're looking at these traffic counts and make sure that those numbers are there. So at least if we have it and we've got-
And if you go through this, it adds all the traffic flow and counts and all this stuff, right? Like that's valuable information, but it's 10 years old, so.
Yeah, updated information is, I'm good with it.
Okay, anybody else? Want to say anything else?
I agree with that, I think we need it, I think if you're uptown at 3:30 or 4:00 and you're trying to get out of a parking spot, good luck. It's backed up bumper to bumper from block to block, so there's definitely a lot of traffic. You know, we need to have a better understanding of it and be able to share that information with others.
Okay.
Investigate.
We will. 4.5, kids carnival.
We've received a request from KRC that as they are holding their summer kids carnival on Saturday, July 23rd, and they are seeking donations of prizes or financial assistance and consider, or consideration to sponsor our old booth. The town partnered with KRC in 2012 during the centennial to host the kids carnival. Since then, KRC has taken it over and the town has not assisted with it. The town has not contributed to this in the past, other than the centennial one, and this is not in the budget. The town already provides KRC with a substantial grant every year, but once again, this is council's.
So, okay, so, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I believe TPCRC puts on a street festival-
Yes.
-which is, this is kind of the same sort of similar things, kind of games and stuff that goes on. There's a tremendous history between KRC's raining on them and being in the arena, I think it is. You know, what happens? It's rained on TPCRC's downtown too, but I'm more inclined to see if those two can get together and work something out of them. I'm willing to bet that both sides are probably not big on that, but if they tried, might, maybe, because I don't, this, again, this is, this is an item that is not budgeted. Times are tough and friends are few.
When's the street festival?
It's in August, it's in August, yeah. I see the benefit in having both. It's a long summer and a lot of things, recreation, especially free recreation wise, shut down in the summer. So I see the benefit in having this in July and then having street festival again in August. I wouldn't be in favor of expending money that we don't have in the budget for it, but if you guys wanna try to make a little bit of money, I'd be willing to donate, or, yeah, donate my time to be patted in the face or have water balloons thrown at me or put in a dunk tank or whatever I can do to help you guys that way.
That happens to me every day.
And volunteer, like, with the kids carnival, like, I definitely, I wouldn't wanna say go away-
You never invited me, Jim, Jesus, I would've paid money for that. Jesus, I want to pay money for it.
Because I think it's a really awesome thing that you guys have put on, so I wouldn't want to see you guys stop that. I just, I mean, again, it's no joke that we don't have a lot of, of money, so, I mean, I would like to see if there's a way that, you know, it can still go on with other sources like Rotary, Kinsman, um, I know you guys applied to TPCRC for a grant, um, like, so I would just hope that there's a way for it to still, still happen and like I said, I mean, I'd be willing to volunteer my time and, I mean, I'm sure we can give you some Town of the PA pins or something to give away as prizes, but yeah, monetary wise, I don't, I wouldn't be comfortable with spending anything.
Anybody else?
I think they're both, they're both kind of different too. One's just for kids and the other one's for adults and kids and businesses and stuff like that, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then you've got the beer gardens, the legions, so, yeah, it's not really, anything to do with the summer, with the kids carnival, so.
I think the kids carnival would be a great complement to the street festival, but like I said, I also see the benefit in having them both.
I think both is, is not a bad idea. It's nice to break up this one.
I have a problem with that.
Well, maybe it's a bigger deal than I thought. I know that we've got them separated on the agenda by one item, so maybe you don't.
Yes.
I know, I'm kidding. So, um, I don't want to make light of it, I just want to make it very clear that we don't have money, so, um, you know, and I'm all about barrier free, so.
All right, I guess with regard to this, the concern is, is that it's an annual event, so next year, what would happen is we would reduce the budget we forward to KRC by the equal amount of the money we would donate to have our name on a, on a booth, and I don't think that's the intent of it.
Whoa, 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 I'm serious. Why are you so serious?
Okay.
We could always do a counselor booth. Yeah, like, we could do like a counselor, like, for sure, like. Just a booth, I guess that's something to, to just be there and volunteer can. I'll for sure be there.
Oh, I got, I got a popcorn machine. Say what?
I have a really cute kid, I don't know what's that. Pictures with Flo for a dollar, I don't know.
We really want you to do it.
Oh, we're, we are doing it. It's just, we're always looking for whatever donations, you know, water bottles, right? So, that's just. Like I said, I'm sure we have some pins. I would be, I would be totally fine with giving you some, like, promo type things. I don't know, even if you have pencils and that, or even some of those ways, yeah. Yeah, do you need a reservation for that? Okay, I can do that. And for me, for sure, let me know what you need to do, like, I'll be there, yeah, yeah, for sure. And you know, like, I'm just going to put this out there and I probably shouldn't be doing this on camera, but like Ford really likes getting involved in things and they couldn't do their truck pull at Canada Day this year because of how the parade and everything is, but maybe that's something that they'd be willing to do, like, at the kids carnival or something like that, right? Like, yeah, maybe have like a mini truck that the kids could pull, I don't know, like, but I'll tell Jordan I threw him under the bus.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Oh, there's a hundred things to say there, but okay.
Okay, sorry.
All right, uh, variation process.
Alan Gibbs speak on this again.
Can we jump through the two or skip one?
No, no. Kids carnival, four point six.
This is what we progressed. Okay, so as we just saw, I think, uh, we have an issue about how we deal with variations. I don't think it's fair to people applying for variations and, to me, it's a bit of a, it's not efficient, right? We talked about it two weeks ago and now we're talking about the same thing again with new information when it should have come forward with all the information. So, if you're looking at developing property, there are certain things you go, right, you go talk to engineering, probably talk to hydro, which is outside of this, you talk to the fire chief and/or building inspector, talk to drafting, talk to CIO.
And those are fields that I have no expertise.
Right, exactly, and maybe they'll look at it and say, "Yeah, that's fine," right? Just check it out, right? But if there's a red flag raised, then we're going back, we're setting ourselves up to make bad decisions and/or mistakes, right? Because we're going off one thing and not all the eyes are looked at, so I think we need to change that process.
I agree, I agree that we should be changing the process, but I think we should be putting the onus back on the people applying for variations.
Absolutely.
You know, so that they're getting this stuff checked off. Here's the application, okay, you've ran it by engineering or you've ran it by public safety.
Here's a checklist, go fill it out.
Go fill it out and then bring it back to me when it's checked off, because putting that back on administration.
Sorry, I'm gonna interrupt.
Nope.
No, I don't, I don't agree with that. You still need one central person to make sure it's checked off. They could come and fill it out or, and I can give them the information, they fill it out and then I can submit it and it's just like a rezoning where they fill out their form for a rezoning and then I send it to the planning branch. The planning branch disperses it to MTS, hydro and for all of their input. They reply back to the planning branch, planning branch sends it all to me. So, I think if you have one main central person, it's not going to get lost in there somewhere.
Okay, so it's, you're the one that would possess the checklist?
Yeah. And that, and I can develop a process, but my only concern is right now, we're only charging a hundred and twenty-five dollars and it is a very time-consuming process.
Well, we need to fix that.
And when you look at sending out letters, because it's usually a hundred meter radius for everyone in there, that's between thirty and fifty letters. You're looking at a dollar a stamp nowadays.
It's crazy, plus the time to put it in the envelope and.
And now, if you're gonna, it's going to go through me, it's going to go through engineering, it's going to go through the fire department, we're looking at a lot more time, at a hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Look at what just happened, the time that was expended, right?
Yeah.
I, I think there'd be a time savings, because you're not going back, like, how many times still, I get, I get it's kind of more work, but in other ways, it's, it's not, we're creating less work because we're operating more efficiently, right?
And my other question was too, in the past, when we'd done variations, you would hear the public hearing, then the resolution would be on, in that council meeting.
I know. We recognize that that was not a good thing to do.
Are you okay with this? You're okay? Okay, no, I just wanted to make sure that that process was still all right.
I like that process, yeah.
I don't know if there's anything we can do about this, but is there anything that we can put where like the applicant or like a representative like has to be here? Because like, I mean, I know the onus is on them, but one of the things that's really frustrating is something that happened tonight, right? Like, then nobody's here and there's nobody that we can ask questions to, so then the whole process just takes a lot longer and it gets deferred back to people and bounced around a lot longer.
I'm not sure if we can, I'll have to check with the planning branch if we can make someone be here.
Yeah, it's pretty hard to.
Well, I mean, they don't want to represent themselves.
I know, but I mean.
They should be here.
We could impress the importance of them coming, but if they don't want to come, they don't want to come.
And I'll tell you, to be honest.
You should say if you don't show up, you're out of time.
Most times we have a variation hearing, there's usually nobody here.
It's not that important to you then, if you're not.
True enough.
Because I mean, we do it right at the beginning of the meeting, sometimes they take five minutes, like, if you can't take fi, I'm sorry, if you can't take five minutes to come and sit here out of your day, how important is it to you?
Yeah.
I was just going to say, I, I think part of the important thing is the form we use. If we put on that form the path it's got to go through within our system so that whoever's filling out the form says, "Oh, shit, what I wasn't going to tell them, now I better rethink what I'm doing because they're going to find out anyway."
Well, back in the day, we had five-part carbonless paper. Way back. Anti-writers, yeah, anti-writers.
When we look at these things and we end up with more questions than answers, your first instinct is to vote no. And maybe sometimes we, we should do that because then it, you know, that doesn't necessarily negate it coming back again, but we somehow have to make sure that, that we're protecting the community and, and the vision for the future, whatever that may be, so that we don't do things that go, "Well, ah, if we would have thought a little longer at it, we would have come up with a slightly different solution and probably whoever's promoting to do something will come up with a better plan." It's not that you stop them from doing it, it's just that you worry about, "Give us the best plan possible for the community as well as for yourself."
And it's got to go through more departments this way, so it's not just.
Yep.
I wonder if we couldn't do, this was just completely off the top of my head, but if, if there were some type of fee schedule for, for each.
Do I have the bronze, silver or gold package?
Well, no, 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 but depending on what departments it has to actually run through, you know what I mean, based the fee on that, I don't know if that's something that could be worked in there or if that's even, you know what I mean? So, if it, if it's just a straight-up variation, okay, we've got to send out these letters, uh, engineering doesn't need to look at it, uh, fire department doesn't need to look at it.
Can I, can I just suggest here right now that we just say, "Look, we need to have a meeting on this," because we can sit and discuss this for the next hour and still not finish it up.
Yeah.
So, I, you know, I think.
I can come up with a few different.
Well, yeah, you know, like, uh, let's, uh, let's have a look and see.
I'll see what other communities do.
Wouldn't it be so nice if we had a committee to refer this to? I mean, defer this to?
Yeah, because I had to committee.
Defer is when you put it to a committee and defer is when you send it to your staff.
So, uh, the PA Community Renewal Corporation, four point seven. That's okay, make your notes.
Well, they have a street festival.
You got, oh, yeah.
You can, sorry, we're.
We can discuss this.
The PA Community Renewal Corporation is currently planning their eighth annual street festival for August twenty, twenty sixteen, with setup starting at ten AM and festival will be from noon to four PM. They're requesting the hundred block of Edwards Avenue of the, to the Uptown Mall be closed. First and second and third streets will remain open for thorough traffic. The town has closed the streets that they have requested in the past and my recommendation is to close the streets.
Thank you.
Administration.
Because it just says permit the one hundred block of Edwards to be closed for the street festival.
That's all they requested.
You said that they're requesting a hundred block to Uptown Mall and the department head